Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Pastor Wilson of the Pastor St. Matthew's. Hey, we're a church, we're glad to have you here for this community meeting. Thank you for coming. Just a couple of things. Number one, restrooms are out at the door to the right. Secondly, this is our section. And therefore, this is our sanctuary. And therefore, we ask that you would respect it as such. We decided to have the meeting here to make sure that the massive number of people we expected to come and weigh in on this would have enough space to be in. Please, no eating, no smoking, no cussing. You can be passionate about your point without utilizing language that is detrimental to this space. This is sacred space, but we are also a community church. So we are open to having community meetings. We would normally do community meetings downstairs, in the dining room. But again, in anticipation of persons coming, we wanted to make sure that we had enough space for everyone. So just be mindful of those things. And now, turn it into the hands of our mayor, Mayor Duane Warren.
Thank you Pastor, and thank you to St. Matthew's Church. This is a community church that opened up their doors, they've been so gracious. I don't want to take up a lot of time. This project is about Orange Memorial Hospital and the site that we hope to have transformed. It is a long-range project. And our developer will talk to you about the various phases. This is our time to give whatever our input is. But I would also task him with giving us information about investment opportunities so that as this site grows and our economy grows, our city grows, the people who live here can have wealth that grows along with it. So without further ado, I do want to acknowledge that this administrator is here. Our Deputy Director of Planning is here as well. And we do have at least one of our planning board members in the house as well. Without further ado, I do want to bring up Tedis Murray. He will give you insight into his experience, the vision, and handle any of the tough questions that our audience may have. At the end of the presentation, there will be lights throughout, so you can ask questions directly. Tedis Murray, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. Can I just say quick show of hands, the people who came out for their first town hall meeting we had? Wow, thank you. I really appreciate your continued commitment to really being engaged in your community and being an active participant in this project. And trying to learn more about what the future of the site is and as a result, what the future of Orange is. During the last meeting, I realized, and actually let me back up. I received an email after the meeting. And I was really appreciative of the email that I got. The email said to me that there is a general disappointment. And that was the word that really rang as I read it. That there's a general disappointment that people did not have an opportunity to be engaged in the evolution of the project beforehand. And so, what I started with last time we met was what I continue to think about as the three Ps. And so that's the project, that's the people, and that's the participation. But I was moving really fast through the project to get to some of the things that I think are really unique and about this particular opportunity, which are the people and opportunities for participation in an overall economic development that's going to happen in and around this site. And so, what I want to do today is start with a couple of those things right off the bat. Because I do want to make sure that we have an opportunity to at least start thinking about how we honor the legacy of the site and what Orange Memorial meant to the community. I also want to make sure that we start thinking about how the residents of Orange can be early movers and what is going to be growth, economic growth in this community. I spent quite a bit of time focused on that in the last meeting. Won't spend as much today, but I do want to touch on it. Because I think that's incredibly important. And I think it would be, like I said at the end of the last meeting, just a terrible missed opportunity if the residents of Orange don't find a way to mobilize and get engaged now before even more people find out what a great place Orange is to invest in. As we touch on that, we'll start spending a little more time going through the site. Excuse me. Going through the site. And what I'm going to ask everybody for tonight is, as we get into the comments, what I'd like to hear from you is, okay, I don't like this, but I would prefer that. What I'm hoping to get is real input from you all about what you want to see programmed into the site. I will continue to remind you that in addition to the apartments that are being built, there is thirty-five to forty thousand square feet of space to be programmed. I had some great suggestions in the meeting last time about using that space for cultural uses. Have had some people talk about using that space for different business ideas. And of course, what's on top of mind for, I think, most people as they think about the site is returning a medical use to that site. That was certainly where I started. And I had been working over the past, really year and a half now, reaching out to various medical care providers to try to get an urgent care as a first step, to try to get an urgent care into the space. And what I'll actually take some time today is I'll take some time to show you on a plan where we created the flexibility to bring an urgent care to the space and have patients pick up and drop off in a certain location. So this is, you know, rest assured that continuing the healthcare legacy of the site is something that is top of mind for us, but also just makes sense. I mean, it just absolutely makes sense. You know, the, I think the closest urgent care that I'm aware of is either on Route 10 or in, what is it? The one out going there. There's one across Orange, and there's one going out here, Short Hills Mall. So but nothing in the immediate area. Yeah. So nothing kind of right, right here. So I think it would make good sense, and I think it would make good business sense for the care provider to come to the space. We're also going to talk about the site planning process a little bit tonight. Because I think that left a lot of frustration in a lot of people's minds last week when we spent a lot of time talking about, well, can we change the site plan? And part of what I want to do, I don't want to go into a whole real estate one-on-one discussion tonight, but I do want to at least explain to you all how the site planning process works and give you some thoughts about what is changeable in the site, what's not really changeable in the site, and then what can evolve over time. So I know that was a really key component to some of the questions that came up last week. We also spent, we spent some time talking about how are we going to stage the construction? So we'll talk about that. And then, the real thing that we spent a ton of time talking about, which was just frankly, out of my purview, were property taxes. And that was a big, big component of the conversation. Property taxes and property taxes as they relate to pilot programs. I am not going to spend time talking about property taxes tonight. And it's for two reasons. One, we spent a ton of time talking about it last week. But two, because I'm not qualified to, or knowledgeable enough to answer the specific questions that you have about property taxes. But what I am going to do is post on my company's website a study that was released, actually February 20th, coincidentally, just a few weeks ago. There was a study that was released, it was a national study that was put together by a nonprofit organization. The name of it is the National Multifamily Housing Council. The National Multifamily Housing Council did a study of pilot programs across the country. And what they did is they studied the impact of those pilot programs. Let me see if I can pull it up. Hold on one second. I'm at that age, you gotta bear with me. Okay, so this is the study here. I'll put it up on my company's website. And you'll see it, it's thirty-three page study put together by this nonprofit organization that studies housing across the country. You know, one of the things that I would ask you to key in on is this page here where what it takes you through is what the multiplier effect typically is for pilot programs. And what it's saying is, in these various municipalities that they study, is that generally, there is a positive correlation to the pilot program and the overall economic growth of the cities where these pilot programs are implemented. So I've asked you to, if you're really interested, to take time and read this for yourself. I don't want to stand here tonight and try to make the case for pilot programs or not. I don't want to take time going over property taxes. But I just wanted you to know that there is independent information out that you can take a reading through and make a decision if you agree or if you don't, or you can do more research about it. But...
Can you go back to the title?
Oh, yes ma'am. It's already on the website. I'm going to put it on our company's website. So it's from the National Multifamily Housing Council. So again, that's just a point of information. Don't want us to get too distracted on that and close that out. And just look for it on the website, it should be up by Monday. I want to find another thing I wanted to touch base on briefly. Here's something else that we're going to post on the website that I want you to be aware of. You know, one of the questions, one of the underlying questions is, why are there so many apartments being built in Orange? And I opened up the conversation last week pointing out that six hundred and fifty apartments have been built in Orange over the last five years. There are another thousand under construction or planning. This is a report that was put together by Walton Dunlop. They're one of the largest real estate brokerage firms in the country. And they actually took time to write a report. And I want you to key in on the title of this report. The title of this report is "The Oranges." Not South Orange, not West Orange, not East Orange, not Orange. The Oranges. And I'm asking you to focus on that to understand that the investment community has woken up to the Oranges as a collective. People are looking at the proximity to transportation. People are looking at the home prices. People are looking at the amenities. I mean, if you start, just think about it. Start trying to count the number of parks, public parks that you have in Orange, West Orange, South Orange. You know, start thinking about it. The world is waking up to this is a fantastic place to live. And that is why you're seeing so much development come to the Oranges. Not just Orange, but to the Oranges, right? So you've got Edison Malls, you've got Brick Church, you have our development, you have multiple developments around town. And this report will give you the investment view of why people now are interested in the Oranges. So again, I'm going to post this on our website. And hopefully, it will help answer the question, why are so many apartments being built? Why are people so interested seemingly all of a sudden coming to Orange? And I will continue to say that this wave is here and it's getting bigger. And that I don't think there's any real reversing it, but I think that there are huge opportunities for people who are already here to take advantage of some of the things that come as a result of this type of growth. So I won't go through the report, but it will be on our website Monday. And you can take a look at it yourself and read through it.
Sir, can you give us the address to the website you're talking about?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry. I'll type it up. But our company website is gateway, letter N as in Mary, letter V as in Boyd, dot co. Gateway Merchant Banking dot co. Gateway MB dot co. Yes. Gateway, letter M as in Mary, letter V as in Boyd, dot co. And I'll type it up, I'll type it up at the end. And I'll give you all my email address at the end again as well. So that was one other thing that I wanted to just cover quickly to add a little bit of context for some of the things that are going on. There's one other thing I wanted to touch on before we got going. See if I can find it here. I don't see it right off, but we'll come back to it. I have a lot of things open that I want to cover. Okay, so let's start here. Because I want to make sure we cover, we cover a couple of these things first and then we can get into, we can get into the meat of the discussion tonight. So as I keep, as I keep talking about this project, I keep talking about when I'm looking at it as the real success factors for the project. And I call it my three Ps. My project, my people, and my participation. From a project standpoint, we want a well-integrated project that works well with the community. And we also always aim to do award-winning, lead standard projects with whatever we do. So that is a baseline for what we're looking to get accomplished when it comes to the project. When I'm talking about the people, I really am talking about honoring the legacy of Orange Memorial Hospital, but also really trying to bring out some of the history, some of the living history for the city of Orange. I think that there are a lot of great things to talk about that will help continue to burnish the identity of Orange. And what I'm really looking for in a lot of these meetings is to get you all's input. You know Orange a lot better than I do, so I'm looking for your input and your follow-up to tell me, hey, these are the things that are important about Orange that we need to make sure we highlight in this project. That's really a lot of feedback that I want to get from you all. But then participation. Participation, if we do this right, this will be one of the most unique and one of the most successful projects that I can think of. Because generally what happens, and I'll get to this, generally what happens is people start thinking about local minority women participation at the very end of the project. They don't start thinking about it in the beginning. And so, I was so very focused in our last meeting on those opportunities that we end up spending a lot of time talking about that. But I am going to keep beating that drum. I'm just going to keep beating it over and over and over again. Because there's this tremendous opportunity if we get focused on it today versus waiting until construction is actually starting. So let me drop down. Let's talk about the people for a second. And this is, this is just quick, easy stuff in my own head without the benefit of all of your input, right? Thinking about what are the things that we can do to honor the legacy and to honor Orange? So one, as we complete the restoration of Mary Austin Hall, one of the things we can do is really make a permanent installation within that building that has history and memorabilia from the hospital inside Mary Austin Hall. The great thing about the city moving its administrative offices there is you know you have someone who has the long-term interest of the town in its consideration. If it was just a third-party office user, we may not be able to have a real conversation about this type of museum feature within that building. But I think that's something that we can implement as a very easy first step to kind of literally mark the place of Orange Memorial Hospital and keep some of that history alive. The other thing that I'm really focused on is really getting a video archive of as many people as I can who were born in the hospital, who grew up in Orange, who have special stories about Orange. So that we can talk about and kind of keep that living history of what Orange means to a lot of people. The reason why this has come up for me is as I started the project, I kept running into people who kept telling me I was born at Orange Memorial or I did this at Orange Memorial. So my title agent was born at Orange Memorial to play football here. My debt broker is from Orange. Her uncle, I think, was the, was he the fire chief or something? I don't know. But I've gotten all these stories of all of these people from Orange. And so, I've realized that there's actually a lot more going on in Orange than we readily talk about. You know, we're going to have a lot of papers that go throughout the site. So one of the things that people have done in a lot of development areas are commemorative bricks where you can get your name on a brick. And so, if people are born in the hospital, we can create a walkway through the site with the bricks. You know, easy stuff that we can do. And some people have even asked to have bricks from the hospital when we start taking it down, that they can keep for themselves as memorabilia. But so, those are, like I said, those are easy things to think of without a lot of effort. But I need you all to give me some real input as to what are the meatier things? What are the more meaningful things for residents of Orange that we can start implementing in the site? And so, the faces that you have down here are just people from Orange. I mean, just, and this is simple Google searching. And for a little, you know, two-square mound of town, it's pretty impressive. The people that have come, you know, the people that have come from Orange. I mean, I won't read it all to you because you can see it. But I mean actresses, astronauts, Pulitzer Prize winners, like, all from this little two-square mound of town. So I think there's a lot of living history that we can find a way to incorporate into the site and really make it a real focal point of the community. So I'm going to stop on those two Ps now because I want to go back and spend some real thoughtful time on the project itself. Before I switch to the project itself, let me do this. Let me go to profit participation first, because I don't want to miss that. On the profit participation, this is what I was saying about how construction normally works. Usually what happens is you have a, you end up with a majority contractor and then the developer has a MBE requirement. And as they're completing their final bidding, the contractor then starts looking for minority and women-owned subcontractors. And I can tell you from being in this business, that's too late. It's just too late. Because at that point, even if you do find a minority contractor for these large jobs, they're probably busy on other jobs. They aren't just sitting around waiting for work. And so, we have the opportunity with this project, because we have such a long lead time, to really start going out and engaging with minority contractors now versus waiting to the end. And so, that is something that I'm actively doing so that we don't end up in a scramble at the end and then, you know, not having full participation. But that's kind of the basic level of participation that you see in construction projects. The next level is really the service providers. And this is where there's a lot of opportunity that people just don't spend time thinking about. During construction, you know, you have the professional engineers, the attorneys, the architects, et cetera. But guess what? You also have security. You have site cleanup. You have food service. You have hauling. All of these are businesses that residents of Orange can form now so that when we're bidding that out, you can be first in line to get those jobs. And those will be contracts that go on for years and years because we're building a lot of apartments over a long period of time. Post-construction presents even greater and longer-term opportunities. Somebody has to clean the buildings. Every time someone leaves an apartment, you have to repaint it. You have to clean the carpet. We'll need an ongoing security presence, private security presence. We need snow removal. We need trash removal. HVAC repair. All of those are opportunities for residents of Orange to form businesses now so that you have operating history, you have all your paperwork in order. Everything is set so that when we start bidding that work out, you can show up ready to go. And we aren't looking for you, we already are in dialogue. So we have time to do that now. Now, the third level is where I start getting really, really excited. I really see it in my head from, just going from Central, from Essex all the way up to Monte Carlo Park. I just see that as a corridor that has opportunity for a lot of growth. And when I, when I show you how we're planning the traffic, you'll see that there will be a lot of traffic being pushed up the street that way. And so, I think there'll be opportunities for businesses that start to service the new residents that are moving up and down Central on a regular basis. So I do think that there's an opportunity for growth. But even if that doesn't come to fruition, there's over thirty thousand square feet of commercial space at our site that we need to program. So we need businesses in that thirty thousand square feet. So we need local businesses to show up to fill that thirty thousand square feet. I mean, sure, we can fill it up with Quiznos and whatever, and that's fine. But I think a higher-level success would be if we could find local businesses to occupy the space that we're programing into the site. And so, that space is primarily along Essex Avenue. And we'll talk about that a little bit as we get into, as we get into the project. So I'm going to move to the project now. Before I do that, any questions, comments, before we kind of really start digging deep into the project?
I just want to acknowledge that I was quite present, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm very curious. I was at the meeting last week. And I don't know whether anybody was thinking about this or was curious about it. Now, from what I know and what I see, that a lot of these new complexes are coming to New Jersey. Are mostly a lot of people coming from New York City. Will that be the case for this project that's coming to Orange Hospital, the Orange Memorial Hospital? A lot of these people come... A lot of these people come from New York into New Jersey?
I think most of our tenants are actually going to come from Jersey. Uh, and what, what's really going on is people are being priced out of, um, kind of Jersey City, Hoboken and Bayonne. And are getting pushed west. And so I think that we're going to pick up more people moving within Jersey than we'll pick up people moving from New York City property.
Now, the other thing I want to say, I can see, I'm, I'm a senior, so I, I, I can check. Um, what I want to say to you also, I know it's mentioned at last meeting. Is there anything in terms of affordable housing at any point of seniors? It's just a question.
No, no, good, good, great, great question. Um, one of the buildings we have on site, we designed specifically, uh, for senior house. And so we've been talking to, uh, senior housing operators about coming into that building. So I'll, I'll show you when we get to the site how we've been thinking about that. Sir? I will spend time focused on playground areas, swings, et cetera, when we get to that point as well. I, I just wanted to, before we go too far afield, I just wanted to talk about the people and the participation before we drop that. Uh, yes, sir?
You were talking about, uh, minority women MBE businesses. The challenge with those businesses is that they usually don't have the bonding and the capabilities. Even not to even position themselves to put a bid in on a project like this. So, uh, are there resources in place now that can help businesses, uh, ramp up and staff up? To be able to even put in a bid into the bonding and insurance and et cetera?
I'm going to answer, your question actually has two layers to it. So I'm going to, I'm going to answer both of them. I'm going to answer the bonding piece second. Uh, but about ramping up now, that's why I'm spending so much time harping on it right now. Because people need to start right now, getting their certifications, getting training. Again, so that two years from now, they can be eligible to actually bid on this stuff. Now, bonding, bonding is important for certain trades, but not for all. Bonding is not necessarily important for all these service businesses that I mentioned. But yes, if you're, if you're a concrete subcontractor, yes, you're, you're going to have to have that. And so there are different ways that people have historically gotten there. And part of it is frankly partnering with a larger group. And, you know, look, that's just how business goes. You have to find your way to partner to then get larger and larger share of pie. And so I would encourage people who know they don't have that financial capacity now. Just start looking for a partner to supplement what they have on their own. But through us, what we're going to do is look for organizations that can help with training. Help with, uh, some of those business processes. So that those organizations can train people on how to get through those, uh, different challenges. Sir?
Uh, to piggy, piggyback that, um, have you engaged with any of the unions? Unions have programs like that to help?
Yep.
Uh, they also have mentorships that are training, they have apprentice programs. Uh, that you could have.
Yes.
At a high school to get involved. You could have kids.
Yeah.
That are in high school if they like this project. They can do their apprenticeships at your project and then have careers to go forward. Have you and the mayor spoke to the unions to get them involved in bidding?
So, uh, so I'm scheduling meetings with the, with a few union reps now. And that will definitely be a part of our process. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Okay, uh, people participation.
Yes, I have a question in terms of the administrative building moving into, in terms of the administrative building. Um, moving into the, on the project? You said City Hall was going to be.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving there, um, will they be paying the rent?
Yeah, so that, that question came up a whole bunch of times and I think people thought I was being evasive, uh, but I wasn't. We still have to work out how we're going to structure. Um, and once we do, it'll be public and all of you have a chance to see it and the city council will have to vote on it. But we just haven't worked it out yet. Hold, hold, hold on one second. Before we devolve into property taxes again. We did that last time, so I, I'm. People participation and let's talk about the project, but go ahead.
Yes, I was wondering, uh, suggested a cultural.
Yes.
Um, I was wondering what is going to be done with the City Hall? The old City Hall, if, if plans are being made to have it, a new City Hall in your.
Ma'am, I don't know.
Cause what I suggested, I would like to suggest maybe the old City Hall could become a cultural, a museum or cultural fair station.
I know you said, you've already spoken about the pilots and unfortunately I was not here the last time. However, I'm sure you know how many years of tax abatements that you're looking for. Um, I know the range is five to thirty. So were you at the lower end of that scale? Or were you looking for something on the higher end?
So someone asked that question, uh, last week. And I answered that question probably in a way I shouldn't have. Um, but I'm going to tell you what I said last week and then I'm going to add on to it. Um, what I said last week was you have to remember, I'm the developer. So for my job, I'm looking for the longest, biggest tax abatement I can get. That's what I said last week. Uh, because I was trying to make the point that this is a commercial enterprise. And I want people to be very focused aware of that. Now, here's the part that I didn't take time to add on to that. Look, we recognize that Orange is not the city of London. Orange is not New York City, Orange is not LA, Orange does not have unlimited resources.
Nor Jersey City.
Nor, Nor Jersey City. So what, what we're doing, and, and someone else asked last week, um, how much do you need? And we are working to, to do historic tax credits, brownfield credits, um, aspire program. If one lady asked me five questions about low-income housing tax credits. So we s- we've been having calls about that last couple of weeks. What I'm saying to you is, uh, all of these things are to fill gaps to make a development work. So my job really is to go and put together a capital stack that fills the gap to make the development work. So today, I honestly can't tell you what that number is ultimately going to be. But until I fill my gap, then I have to keep asking for as much as I can get. As I try to line up all of the different capital pieces to make this project work.
Okay, so I think the follow-up question from me would be, can you build without your tax abatements? From the city?
No.
You don't, you don't have the ability to build. You can't get additional financing, is that present?
This is the last question I'm going to ask on this before we go to project, okay? But I'm trying to be very respectful of, of your time because you weren't here last week. And if we can, I, I promise you, people can tell you, people in this room have emailed me out of nowhere, don't know them at all. And I have met them, sat down with them, spent two hours talking about the project. So I really am very open to spending time talking about this. This is, this is the right forum to get into the mechanics of how do you get a three-hundred-fifty-million-dollar project financed? But to answer your question, without a combination of incentives, then no. You can't get the project built. And that's not gateway can't get the project built. That's any developer can't get the project built because of the costs that go along with the infrastructure of building these projects. That's just, that's just how it works. So that doesn't mean all of them come from the city of Orange. Like I said, there are multiple different places that we're going to put together the capital stack. If you want to email me, you want some more time talking about it, I'm glad to do it. Okay? All right, people participation, then we're going to project, yes? Great, um, so it's.
You mentioned about investments and us being a part of, you know, receiving or trying to build well. How do you, how do you go about being invested?
Yeah, so, so those are some of the things that, that I'm talking about. Is, is really paying attention to what the needs are going to be for the future residents that are coming in and how the city is going to grow. And creating businesses to serve those needs. Our particular project is going to have, you know, a multiple of the things that I have listed on the screen. That we're going to need people to provide. And what I'm saying to all of you now is I'm giving first preference to Orange residents for all of these things. So what I'm hoping happens is that over the next year and a half as we're mobilizing. That people are starting trucking businesses or janitorial services or painting businesses, whatever it is. So that then you come and apply and bid for the work. That's a very, very simple thing. The longer answer to this is, um, the longer answer to this is. To the extent you have the ability to purchase property in Orange. I would suggest to you now that today is a much better day to purchase property in Orange than tomorrow. Because the prices are going to continue to come up as people find out what a jewel Orange is. So I could look for, you know, tax lots, vacant lots, vacant buildings. And really start focusing in on acquiring those properties. I would go up and down Main Street. I get distracted honestly when I go down Main Street looking in the second-floor windows of all those retail stores. Just imagining what that space could be used for. All of it's just vacant right now. Uh, but you're going to have thousands of people who are new to Orange that are looking for, that are looking for services. So I would start spending time thinking about those things. Uh, so I, I said this last time, this is our second of hopefully many, many conversations. Uh, and I'm glad to have a whole conversation around financial opportunities. I'm hopeful that we're going to have multiple conversations around the people portion of this. Because I definitely can't figure that out on my own. I really need you all, uh, kind of the history there of Orange to help me understand how to do that. Um, okay, before we get to the project, is your hand up?
Yeah, are you going to ask questions after your meeting?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Are you going to add that, add questions again later? Or is it going to be the question portion of the?
Nah, I, I was, I was trying to just get, because so many people still have questions about the project. I was trying to just get off of this, uh, I wanted to hit it quick. What's that?
While you're presenting, is that we could possibly ask?
Yeah, sure, wh- what is your question?
I mean, I have a few, but it's related to things that you're doing in the project, right? For example, um, the affordable housing, I just thought, I mean, I think you have four buildings that are going to be for, or three? That are going to be for housing, three houses, three buildings or four buildings?
Five buildings.
Five buildings.
Yes.
We do have affordable housing, are they going to be segregated? In other words, is affordable housing going to be on a different floor, a different building than the other ones? Or are they going to be mixed throughout and make sure that they're intertwined?
I don't know yet.
Um, so we don't know, okay, so that's one of the questions. The other one was about the, there was a concern to me and I spoke to a few different people. And someone actually sent me an article on it, the gated community thing.
It's not a gated.
They did, when you like bought certain places after a time at night, I don't want to give them all the information. Um, I don't see the value personally and I would hope that you would consider, this wouldn't change your plan in any way. Wouldn't affect you having to walk for permits. But I'm hoping that you would consider taking that away, seeing that this is a community-driven project. There's no reason that we should feel that we can't walk by at any point in time. I'm not saying that we should be walking past during that time. I don't like the idea of anything in Orange or anywhere.
I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you when we get to the project portion. I'm going to show you exactly.
What that looks like.
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm almost on this one. Um, you just said that you responded to all emails about people that wanted to meet up with you.
Yes.
That's not true because I know someone that tried to reach out to you and I'm not going to pull their name out there because they're not here today. But if you'd like on the side, I absolutely use the name and you actually mentioned their name last time.
Ma'am, let me stop you, let, let me stop you. And I, I want to, I want to be, I want to be relative about this. Um, when we did the planning board meeting, we actually did two planning board meetings, if, if you all remember. We actually did two planning board meetings. Uh, I actually went back, I've said this before, I actually went back.
Yes, and I received a lot of letters, I received a lot of letters that we answered each of your questions.
So, so let me, let me, let me finish. So you received a letter. So for those of you who don't know, I went back and I re-watched the entire planning board meeting. For the only purpose of making sure I could hear the questions and get the people's names and addresses. And I, I took time to write everybody who asked a question, a letter. To try to further in more detail answer their questions. And I offered everyone I wrote in that letter, an opportunity to meet with me directly. So ma'am, if one person, if I missed one email from one person. Then you got to give me a little bit of grace because I'm doing what I can to reach as many people as I can. So they can reach out to me again, okay? Just ask whoever they are to email me again. That's why I put my email up on the screen at last meeting, okay?
All right, then the other question was, can you, is it possible for you to maybe as part of your community engagement? You yourself participate maybe on other community projects, maybe that'll be a way that you can be considered around?
I don't know what you mean.
For example, if somebody needed a, a genuinely to be like revamped. Maybe that can also be a part of, um, the, the community engagement, trying to make the community better. Because as far as I'm concerned, I don't see the value in having a city hall that's thirty thousand square feet. When we already have a paid off city hall that doesn't pay anything right now. I think as far as that's concerned. I'm a community, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to like put you down or anything like that. But it's a community forum, we are allowed to speak, correct? So I'm not trying to attack you and I could be wrong and that's why you're here to correct me. So I don't want you to get frustrated and, and I won't get frustrated, but you know, just listen. We don't need a city hall, city halls are paid off, why are we going to pay you a lease? So that we can do what happened in the building? To me, doesn't make sense. And I know that the majority of the people I've spoken to in Orange do not want a new city hall. And maybe in, like Laura said, maybe go cultural center.
Ma'am, I hear you. That actually is not part of my remit. So. That's not, that's not part of my authority or decision, right?
Well, we can't, well, we don't have a say in what kind of stuff.
No, ma'am, we're, this is, this is where we, this is where we got off track. This is where we got off track in the last meeting. And, and I think people missed my meaning when I was saying, I'm just the developer. What I'm saying to you is, there are some things about the inner workings of the city of Orange that I just, I'm not a part of. I'm not, I, I know, but I'm, but I'm not.
So he can't deal with the city hall here. I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand what you're saying. Anyway, I don't want to take over everyone, but I want to understand them and I can see to everyone else, I know what's going on.
Ma'am, I am, I am so glad to meet with you individually and talk about this in detail. I know, but I use the four of your questions. Like, let's just, let us, let us get through, let us get through some additional questions and then I'll come back to you, okay?
I, I have a question, I have, I have a mic. I have the mic.
I, I don't.
Hi, good evening. I understand that this is a community-driven project. And I do realize that one thing that brings people to a city is their public education system. So my question to you is, have you collaborated with the Orange Board of Education? To see what can be done about the oversized classrooms and the shortage of teachers? And you're bringing families and children into an environment that needs to have an educate, a public education system. That is appealing and that will bring people to the city. So have you collaborated with the Board of Education? So have you collaborated with the Board of Education is my question?
No, ma'am, I have not.
Do you, do you plan on doing that? If the school, if we need more schools in the city, if we need more qualified teachers in the city? What's, what's going to, what's going to draw people to your development if they're looking for a good public school?
My, my renters...
Is his job?
My, my renters are primarily single people or young couples without children, so they aren't generally making a rental decision based on the school system.
I usually don't need a microphone, but I'm going to speak up right now, it's me, me, yeah, the little girl talking. Um, I really want you to get to the project.
I really want to get to the project too.
I was a participant in one of the planning meetings, and I'm here tonight to hear whether or not you're listening to us or we're just going through the protocol and the process. Because there were recommendations made then, so I'm anxious to hear if you've addressed any of those recommendations, like, do we need a new city hall, do we need a ice skating rink? I'm looking to see whether or not any of those have been answered in the project. Are we just going through this because we have to as a part of community engagement for you to satisfy the requirements of building this property? So if we could just get to the project, then maybe we can get to the questions.
Okay, I'm going to go to the project, ma'am.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Mike Lee. I'm not even, I'm sorry. No, I just want clarity, just to see where we are for suggestions. Or is that going to be in the part of the project, or is that in this segment?
That's in the project, we're trying to get to the project.
Oh, okay, I just want clarity, that's all.
Okay, okay, okay. Let me, let me also, let me also say something. Um, I understand that there's a, that there's years-long frustration about the hospital. I, I understand that. Uh, and I understand that I just happen to be the person who's standing in front of you talking about the hospital. Uh, so, so I understand that as well. Um, but I am at my level best trying to get you going to understand that I am here trying to get your feedback and your input. I actually have, ma'am, just so that you're clear, I actually have no legal contractual, any type of obligation to do this. I, there, there's nothing about my approvals, there's nothing about my financing, there's nothing that compels me to do this, other than I want to be here to do this.
So I'm listening to hear if there've been any changes, so if we could get to the project?
Okay, okay, so we're going to the project. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so possibly I was having a stab on it a little bit. But, you know, what did anybody else say about the city of moving to this new facility, new site? Uh, we would like to know, because, or more or less like, we are buying, we like to sleep up in the city. We are buying the mail, it's out of our taxes and everything. So we are expecting, we have been there, it's in the house today. Since you said that is not a transition, who may be to answer that area? I was expecting you to stand before us and tell us why they need to relocate to this place. If it's something we can afford, or it is something that we cannot afford, if it's something that, that in retail value, without us knowing about it, we would like you to have an input into that, maybe to answer what we have.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, so can I, can we, can we move on to talk about project? Let's, let's do that. All right. All right, let's, let's start where, where we started. Um, there is, there is an existing document, um, that is on this, that is on the city's website. Um, it's the Cora, the Central, Central Orange redevelopment area agreement. Uh, what it does is it lays out all of the, um, requirements and expectations for, for the redevelopment of the site. Where we started was picking up that document and reading through it and trying to understand what were the requirements that were already in place and doing our best to stay within those requirements. And so what we designed from a starting point was really based on what had already been ratified by the city. So as we came into the process, we started from a thought of, this has been something that has been codified and actually modified, because there is a first one and then it was updated a couple of years ago. Uh, and we came into the process looking at that as our guide. This shouldn't be on the screen right now, don't get too fixated on it. Um, and as we, as we started the process, we said, okay, this is great. This tells us everything that we can and cannot do, and so as long as we stay within this, we should be doing great. Um, so as we started designing the site, one of, one of the questions that, that has come up a couple of times is about pedestrian access, the gates keep coming up. Um, and what I, what I want to, what I want to start you with, just so that you understand our thought process and how we got to where we are. Um, I'm going to show you some of the early, some of the early configurations. Um, like I say, don't get too fixated on it, but I'm, I'm showing you some of these early configurations to show you kind of where it could have started and, and where we, and where we are now. So if you see this one real quick, uh, I'll get back on it. Yeah, I lost it, I got too many things open, I'm sorry. Here we go. So this is where, this is where we started. And these were all buildings that were basically, uh, kind of facing each other wall off with absolutely no access at all for the public, and it was going to push all of the traffic right on and off of Essex. Really bad design, made no sense. Uh, so we started there and then we, we moved away from that, so I'll close that out. Then we went, we went to this, which pushed everything to the inside of the site, and then we had all these buildings kind of wrapping themselves around the site, basically creating a fortress. Bad design again. It was efficient, it was cheaper, because we had all the surface parking, but really bad design again. So then we went to another design, which was somewhat similar, where we were trying to, we were trying to add to the site. We broke up the buildings a little bit, created a little more space and tucked the parking under the buildings, but it was pretty much still the same thing, where we had buildings working their way around the perimeter of the site with absolutely no access for anyone who didn't live there. Again, bad design. So now we started thinking about how do we open the site up a little bit? This is where we really started getting into the meat of the design. Um, so here, what we did was, we said, okay, well, let's open it up, and to do that, we need to go higher. So we created these eleven-story buildings on Essex to get the density and then to try to open the site up a little bit. Uh, this gives you, gives you a, a better view of what I'm saying. And you can get a sense of the scale of the buildings here and here. It would have opened up this area a little bit. Let's see, you would have had eleven-story buildings on Essex, which really makes no sense. But you see Site C and Site B started kind of taking shape. We started thinking about, okay, this is starting and it kind of gets somewhere, but still not a great design. So we came along and we said, let's get the traffic off of Essex, let's push the traffic over to Central. So we put this big drive out right down the middle of the site, but we still had these eleven-story buildings hanging over Essex. So we were getting there, we were pretty set on Site B and Site C, and we were getting here on what we call Site A, but this still wasn't a great design. Because even if you were a tenant living here, your outdoor area was dominated by a main drive with a turnaround, and there was really no recreation area, no real green space, et cetera. Not a great design. So we tried it a different way. Now you see we have our amenity building with the rooftop pool, this is when we started thinking about it. We moved around about over here to try to create some more green space and try to create a little bit more open space and some more walkability into the site. So here we first introduced some real access points, kind of coming around the edges of the site. You see Day Street being pushed through, and now you have a real focal point around the Boiler House Building. Still not perfect, but we were trying to, we were trying to get there. So then we finally figured out, look, let's open this whole thing up and try to create as much green space as we can internal to the site. And this is, this is pretty much where we landed, with creating as much green space as possible and then making Mary Austin Hall really a focal point, a visual focal point of the entire site. The reason why we focused in on Mary Austin Hall was twofold. One, in that document, the Cora that I mentioned, I'll put that on the website also, in that document, the Cora that I mentioned, uh, it specifically calls out three buildings on the site that have historical significance. One is this Boiler House Building here, one is Mary Austin Hall. And for those of you who are familiar with the corner of Henry and Essex, there is a building that would sit right here, that's known as the North Building. So those are the three buildings that were listed in the Cora as the most historically significant buildings on the site. And so we were working to try to save those three buildings. Now, if you walk past the site and stand at M and T Bank and look across the street at the North Building, you'll see that the North Building is missing a roof in a major part of, uh, disruption. So as we looked at that, the order damage over years and years and years just made out a building that really was a little too difficult, too expensive to try to save. So we said, look, we can't really save the North Building, so that fell out of the plan, but we got really focused on trying to save the Smoke Side and Mary Austin Hall. Um, and so that is how the plan started to really come together and take shape, with the focus on Mary Austin Hall as a visual focal point and creating as much green space as we could all the way throughout the site. Um, now, one of the other things that we had to start focusing on, and this question has come up quite a bit, was how do you handle the traffic if you're putting a thousand units and you have Little Essex Street, Essex Avenue as the, as the main road? So what we did is, this is what we call Site C, this building between Essex Avenue and Matthew Street. We designed this building with an entrance to the parking garage on Essex and an exit from the parking garage on Matthew Street. At first pleasure, that seemed to make any sense to try to push cars out on Matthew Street, because Matthew Street is so small. But the reason why we put that parking garage in the back is so that we can control the traffic going to Essex. So if you think about your morning commute and how busy Essex gets, what we have opportunity to do is push traffic out of the back of the parking garage. And it's really simple, it'll cost about, I don't know, two hundred bucks. And you just put a sign right here that says, "No left turn between seven and nine AM." And what you do is you prevent cars from going back towards Lincoln, and you push them up Henry Street. No turns on Essex. You push them to the newly extended Day Street, which gives them an opportunity to go over to Two Eighteen or come over to Central Avenue. So I continue to talk about what I see for Central Avenue, because I know that part of the plan is to really push as much traffic as possible up Central Avenue. The reason why that makes sense is Central Avenue is a big, wide county road. It's not a little skinny city road. So you're pushing that traffic onto Central Avenue, and you're keeping it off of Essex. The other thing we did as we laid out the site is we put our parking garage right here on the corner of Central and, and what will now be Day Street. So I think part of the, part of the thing, as I've said, if people haven't, haven't been able to fully visualize it, right now, you know that Day Street doesn't push all the way through to Central, but when you factor in, we're creating a new roadway to carry our own traffic, we put the entrance to our parking garage right here, such that again, if you're leaving in the morning, no right turn. You only have an opportunity to turn right, you're forced to go up Central. Now, you can make a left on Center Street, you can go down further, but you're forced away from the schools, you're forced away from the traffic on Essex, and now we're pushing traffic back up Central. And so that is how we think we mitigate a lot of the traffic during the high-traffic time of the day by forcing cars to move up Day Street, which is what we're going to pay to put in place, and then further up Central. And that's a key component of how we control traffic, uh, throughout the site. This overhead view also gives you, uh, a fairly good look at how we created the green space throughout the length of the site and what we'll get into are the different points of pedestrian access. Let me zoom in a little bit, since we're right here. Pedestrians will have the opportunity to enter the site at this point, at this point here, at this point here. There will be elevators and stairways that take you down to the center of the site, and then there's additional pedestrian entrances here and here. There will be a resident entrance right here on Central as well. So from an access standpoint, we really did go through a number of different iterations trying to think about how do we integrate ourselves more into the town versus starting out with those blocky buildings that were facing into each other and not creating public access in and out of the main area. And so all of this, we are encouraging people to use this space throughout the day. We want activity in this space throughout the day. And part of the business reason that we want activity in this space throughout the day is because under this building and under this building, we have about thirty thousand square feet of retail that we want to see become viable. And so if we don't have people accessing the space on a regular basis, if we don't make it easy for people to access the space, then this retail goes dark. And now what you end up with is Essex with vacant storefronts, and that's worse, it's not worse than what you have now, but it's not a good situation if that's what we end up with. So I'm, I'm double-clicking and underlining and putting on bold, we want people inside of our site. We want people walking in and out, up and down, and through the site. That is how we designed it, that is the purpose, that is what we want. Um, we went further as we were, as we were thinking about the site. Um, let me see if I can scroll over on this, on this view a little bit.
Are you able to show us where the urgent care?
Yeah, I am, I am.
I know you're working on it, but can you show us where?
Yes, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
So we went, we went further in our thought process around how do we, how do we stay connected to Central Playground, which is really right over here? How do we find a way to integrate into that? And so we created this outdoor space that is adjacent... And so we created this outdoor space that is adjacent to what will be a restaurant. Um, so the restaurant will be here. You're looking at outdoor seating that would be around the restaurant. But then we created this very wide area, uh, to pull people into the site. And what we, what you're looking at here, this green space here, is a children's play mound. Um, so I don't know if you all have seen these before, but it, it is what it sounds like. It's a big mound that kids can just kind of roll around and play on. And so we want this to be a really family kid friendly area where people can eat outside, the kids can play. And kids who are kind of naturally across the street feel comfortable walking over into this area. Not like it's separate, but for as much as we can, um, make it feel like it's an extension of what they're already doing across the street at Central Playground. Now, your question about urgent care, um, I should show you in a different view, but we're here. Let me, let me, uh, scroll down a little bit. So the other thing we had going for us as we planned this out is the width of, of this entryway. And so one of the things that we thought about is if we do get an urgent care, what we maybe could do is situate the urgent care in this part of the building such that this could actually turn into vehicular access or double as vehicular access to drop patients off right here. And then they would come and pull right back out here. So the curb cuts are already there. The curb cuts are part of our, uh, site plan approval already. Uh, and so if we put an urgent care in this space, cars will come in, drop off, pull out, and then come back around and park in the parking garage behind the building or in the spaces along the street. Now, that's not the only place that we can put urgent care. We could easily, uh, use any of this space along Essex because we will have on-street parking here along Essex. Uh, or we could put it down near Central. So we have lots of flexibility as far as where we put it. But to answer your question, that's where we, uh, that's where we're thinking. We could put an entrance where we could put an overhead on it and we can get cars in pretty, in and out pretty easy.
With parking, available parking?
Yes ma'am, we have on-street, we have on-street parking and we have a parking garage immediately behind the building that has six hundred and thirty spaces in the parking garage.
I'm here to tell you that's not practical.
Ma'am?
It's not practical to have an urgent ca- excuse me, urgent care here and the parking several feet away. I mean, it's really not practical.
Okay, well, you know.
Usually an urgent care has parking in front. They may have some handicap spaces, excuse me, and additional parking.
Yes ma'am, and we have on-street parking as well. So we don't, we don't have, we don't have the urgent care provider yet. So when we have the urgent care provider, that's when we'll sit down and we'll start really configuring exactly where they go and exactly how it's situated. So, uh, you know, the young lady asked a question multiple times last week. Well, is the plan subject to change? Well, yeah, the plan is subject to change in a lot, in a lot of ways. Uh, but it will be as we're sitting down and really with the urgent care provider at the table saying, okay, look, these are the areas where we think you can go. But remember, we have almost forty thousand square feet of space to use. So we've got a lot of places that we can put people. And so we'll work it out and we'll figure out where to put them at that point. Sorry.
Let me bring you my guy. Do we need a mic?
Aren't the streets smaller because for the on-street parking, if the streets are smaller, there would basically only be one lane.
Great question. Great question. So what, so what you'll see in the, in the actual design and with, uh, sidewalks and with the street is that we're actually recessed a bit. And so we have additional space where we cut into, uh, the area and it gives ample room for parking. But great, great, great question. Yes ma'am, in fact.
You said that City Hall would be a part of, would be a part of that building, right? City Hall is going to be moved from Day Street to that property?
Yes ma'am.
So I don't know how many employees City Hall already has. It would have to be quite a bit. Who has parking for them? And what is, uh, what Thompson, how many?
It's a thousand units.
Parking for them?
Yes.
Parking for the business?
Yes.
You still don't have enough parking, so I don't know very well where that one was in the number two.
Could you just hold the mic to your.
But if City Hall be a part of your business or if City Hall be independent as it is now, because it's going to be in your, um, your property.
Yeah, so, so on, on the parking. Uh, so where the parking works, um, without, again, getting into too much detail, um, there are, there are just prescribed parking ratios for, you have a certain number of spaces per square feet of office use. You have a certain number of spaces per square feet of retail use. Then you have a certain number of spaces required per apartment unit. And so we meet all of those requirements. We have, uh, well over twelve hundred, uh, parking spaces throughout the site. I think, I think you're asking the same question about a City Hall paying rent or a City Hall want to own the building. Is that what you're asking? Yeah, and, and as I say, we just haven't, this is just going to be a structuring thing and we just haven't finalized the structure yet.
But City Hall is finalized. It's come, yes?
Moment, we have not finalized that yet.
Yeah, hello. Um, couple of questions. One, um, firstly, if this was One Bay Avenue in Montclair, would this not have to be presented in front of Montclair HPC? And if so, um, do you have any commitments to present to, you know, Orange's HPC after talking about expanding, uh, the historical footprint and not the legacy of one of our oldest buildings? That's number one. Number two?
Hold on one second.
All right.
Uh, so to answer directly, no, there's nothing about my approval that requires me to do that. To give you the next piece, I continue to say, I'm glad to meet with any individual in any group in the City of Orange to discuss the plans with the site and take their input.
No problem. Second question. Um, probably more of a true statement than an assumption. You're talking about one thousand units for single people. I don't think you're going to have one thousand single renters, truthfully honest. Secondly, uh, when you're talking about a school population point of view, um, I'd say within, easily within three to five years, this is going to, you're probably going to crush the student population between the middle school, the high school, Lincoln, and Oakwood.
I, I, I will, I will just have to find the data to, uh, to prove it out to you. But when you, when you spend time and look at the square footages of the units that we're building, they honestly are not conducive for families. Uh, they're really, they're really designed for.
That doesn't mean that you're not going to be not approving them either.
We're, we're designing a project that is targeted towards singles and young couples primarily without children. That's, that is who we're designing, who we are designing the project for. Now, would there be some, some people who move in that have kids? Absolutely there will be. Will that be the majority of the people that move in? No, it won't because we aren't designing a product that really suits that lifestyle. We're designing for a different type of renter.
My apologies, Mr. Terrence, but, uh, designing and getting money are two different verbs. I don't think you're going to tell us that.
I, I, I appreciate the question. I can't do anything but answer it. I hear your concern. I've, I, I, um, let me just say this as it is. I've been in this business for a long time. I understand the type of demand that is generated by these products. We really don't end up with a majority of families moving in. We just don't because you, you can't move a family. Well, you can, but you won't comfortably move a family into a seven hundred square foot apartment. That's what we're building. That's not made for families. So it, it's, it's not, that's just what it, what it is. I hear your concern, but I can't do anything but prove it out to you over time.
I get it. Lastly, you know, just looking at the miracles of it. Uh, average New York rent is roughly thirty-six forty-five. And Manhattan is roughly forty-one hundred and forty-four hundred. If you're talking about, you know, building in the last quote-unquote basket of accessibility in New York, we've been there. But, uh, you know, at the cost of two thousand, twenty-five hundred per unit. So that means that some families for savings of a thousand to two thousand a month are going to pick up, uh, housing, uh, within the unit, uh, regardless of what their family size is. And they're going to make it work because of what the average New York, uh, rent is, not to mention whatever commuting cost is. That's just the truth of it.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just got one question. Um, what I heard tonight is pretty much you don't have to leave. So, um, am I to understand, you probably said it already. Have I, am I to understand that this is already?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, all right. I just wanted, um, to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Okay.
Terrence, we could.
Yeah, sure.
I just want to address an issue, uh, with regarding City Hall. There will be public meetings to outline the need for City Hall, the costs behind it, uh, the disposition of the current building and those funds go into the terms. There will be public meetings directly addressing those issues. And if that happens, it'll be a public meeting, uh, the developer will be here as well. All the fighters meeting will be online as well.
All right, just a simple question. I mean, putting my hands in the air. Um, I just need to know how this project is going to impact homeowners in the immediate area. Listening and I'm looking at the diagram and I'm not seeing, it, it, there are a lot of homeowners around the area. Uh, not necessarily rich people, but it's right in the path of your project. What is going to happen to these people? I'm talking about Ivy Court. I'm talking about South Center, um, going towards Henry. You know, that even, what, what happens to the homeowners of the place?
I'm not sure I understand your question. What do you mean by that?
I'm asking you, I, I think, I'm, I'm fairly intelligent. I'm looking at your program, um, at the, at your diagram. I'm seeing you talking about Essex. I'm hearing you talking about Central. And you mentioned South Center Street. There are people that have houses, including myself, in that area. I'm just asking, what is going to happen to those houses?
I think, I, I think I understand.
I, I know.
What he, what he's talking about, see, you have your renderings and you have your layouts out there of, of the new projects. You have houses, residential areas.
Please, sir.
You have residential areas that are adjacent to the projects that you built. And I know when you start doing construction, are you going to have easements in those areas for those people that have houses in that area? Okay, I'm going to start from the beginning.
Oh.
What, what, what I think he's, what he's getting at is that you're showing your renderings of the buildings of the new construction, but also within those areas that have residential, existing residential areas that are there that are possibly going to be affected by the construction. And in some parts of that, they might even need some of those residence areas to work in.
They won't, they won't.
They're going to need, no, they're missing one.
Hold on, let me. First of all, let me, let's make some blanket statements. This is going to be a seven-year build out, right? So I am not going to stand here today and give you an absolute on anything. Okay, so I can't, I can't have you jot it down. He said absolutely no easements ever, ever, ever.
Right.
I can't say that today.
I think that's his concern.
But let, so now let me, let me show you, uh, let me show you this.
See, because you have, you have, you have your renderings and they're adjacent to a lot of.
I, I understand. Just, just give me a second. No. Yeah, I know, right? Okay. So if the question is about phasing, let me, uh, let me tell you what we're thinking about phasing now, if that's, if that's what the question is. Uh, the great thing about the site is we have so much space. Um, and actually, um, the site, man, because you asked a question last time, we actually met back out with a general contractor last week to really try to walk through it and think about phasing. So our site goes from Matthew Street to Essex, from Essex to Day. And then we pick up these three houses and we come back behind Ivy Court. All right? So from a phasing standpoint, we zoom in. The way we're thinking about phasing now, no absolutes, the way we're thinking about phasing now is we'll start with the renovation of Mary Austin Hall. When we start with the renovation of Mary Austin Hall, this lower leg of this T will be demolished. This will give us all the room we need from a staging standpoint for our construction materials. So we'll pull all of that construction off-site. Now, we're going to have to have curb cut coming through here. So we'll get rid of, you know, this, there's a little small building, if you guys can picture Henry Street. There's a little small building kind of just adjacent to Mary Austin Hall. So this will probably come down and we may get rid of, uh, the North Building at the same time. Not sure, but it may just be more efficient to get rid of the North Building at the same time. So that we have all of this area to work in. So as we're working on Mary Austin Hall, all of the staging, all of the materials, all of that will be back here. Except for when we're working on the facade of Mary Austin Hall. Um, if you guys, I'm going to show you quickly. So you see this here? Ivy creates a lot of damage to brickwork. So, and these windows have been open for years. So now during the time period that we're taking the Ivy off the building, during the time period that we are repointing the brick, during the time period that we're fixing the furnaces, yes, this sidewalk will be closed for safety reasons. Absolutely, yes. Will Henry Street be closed? I can't think of any reason why we would need to close Henry Street for any extended period of time to do the facade work for Mary Austin Hall. But all of your constructs, your trucks or equipment, materials will be staged behind the building. So there shouldn't be no reason to close off Henry Street.
Now, one other question. See, before this demolition and stuff that's going to be gone, you're going to have a large influx of roads, whatever they are.
Oh, we, we do extermination.
Oh, so you, what you, um, like the residents, would they be asked, have access to the free extermination or something like that?
Yeah, I, I hadn't thought about that.
Because this is going to be an influx. I do, I, all right.
I know, you gotta, like, I'm sorry, that's, I hadn't thought of it. So that, that's actually an all right idea. Thank you.
Just one more question. Your design.
Guys, you gotta, come on, y'all need to be like one at a time.
I mean, we're talking about the projects, so I'm, I'm just dealing with the projects. So, and I, I noticed in your design, you have.
Can we talk about it tomorrow morning?
Oh, yeah, we could.
Okay, let's just talk about tomorrow morning.
All right.
Okay, all right, thank you. I know, but he's, he's asked three questions. We gotta, we gotta kind of keep, we gotta keep going.
Can I get to one more for him? One more, and I, one more and I'm done. Your design looks good, but is there going to be enough room for fire trucks to get in? Your design looks good, but is there gonna be enough room for fire trucks to get in?
Absolutely.
I'm good.
At, you know what? Project. That's what we're trying to get to, the project. Yes, project. Yes, it's.
Maybe you can help us understand how Day Street goes through to Central Avenue.
Can you speak up, please?
Sorry about that. I'm asking how Day Street can go through to Central Avenue without affecting homes on Ivy.
I know that is a very particular issue that we're gonna spend, you and I are gonna spend a lot of time talking about. Can I, because that affects you and a couple other people, can we just have our conversation about that, but I continue to answer kind of broader questions tonight? Okay, thank you. All right, so, uh, fire trucks. Fire trucks. All right, so, we actually spent a lot of time with the fire department, um, as we were designing the project. So, I, I mean, multiple trips to the firehouse, going over the planes, like, really making sure that we had good access, uh, for the fire trucks. And so, what you, what you see here is the vehicular circulation planes specifically put in place to make sure that we had access throughout the entire interior of the site for the fire trucks. So, even though there would be barriers on Essex that would stop most of traffic from coming through, um, what you have is this big wide, part of why this lane is so wide is because we needed it to be wide enough to get the fire trucks through to address any fire issues on this building. You come through here, and there's a double-height floor. So, we actually lifted the floor of the building up so that the fire truck can go underneath it and come through to the interior of the site. The fire truck can also come into the site on Henry Street here, the corner of Henry and Essex, and come all the way through the site this way, and then come all the way through the center of the site, all the way back down to our central. So, from a fire standpoint, yes, thank you for the question. We spent a lot of time working with the fire department to make sure they had great access into the site. And then, of course, on, on Day Street, um, they have access coming right through Day Street. We did the same thing again. We don't have any units on the first two floors, so that fire trucks have enough ceiling height so that they can drive straight under the building to get to anything they need to get to on Day Street. So, thank you for the question. All right. So, let's, let's go up a little bit. Um, what I, what I wanted to talk about, what I wanted to really get into was the experience that we're trying to create at the site. That's really what I wanted to spend more time talking about tonight, and I said, let's get past the other stuff, let's just get to the project.
I wanna get to the project, but we, we wanna get to the questions that we have. And I understand your presentation. I get it, but it's a really big project. And the reality is, there are some questions that we continue to have that are not being answered. I appreciate your presentation. I know how hard it is to present to an audience that's this diverse with that many questions. But some of our questions are just not being answered. And we really wanna get, is there gonna be an opportunity for us in not speaking with you individually? I have problems with that, because there are other people who might wanna hear the answers.
Ma'am, when, when I, when I keep saying that I'm willing to speak with anyone individually, what I'm trying to communicate to this group is I am completely open to talking and answering any questions that you want, small groups, big groups, but we just run out of time. That's all I'm saying to you, is we've run out of time when we have these forums. So, I'm trying to let people ask questions, but I'm also trying to give you some of the answers that you're looking for. So.
Well, can I ask some questions then? Because I've been to a couple of meetings and they're not being answered.
Ma'am, what is your question?
We talked, what, the impact on the community is important to me. Dropping a thousand units into a two-point-two square mile area has an impact on the community. And I wanna know how that's been addressed. I know it's gonna impact taxes. We already know our taxes will go up as a result of the services that are gonna be required to accommodate these people. But these are the questions quickly. Low-income housing. We live in a community where twenty-one percent of the people live below the poverty guidelines. Where are they gonna be? Are they gonna be segregated? The state law has accommodated.
Ma'am, let me ask you a question.
Well, let me just give you two, and then you can answer real quick, 'cause the other one is related. Moderate-income housing. Our young people who are coming back from colleges, who are coming back to establish their professional lives. There is a state legislative law that says we also accommodate those moderate-income people. How many units in this dwelling, percentage-wise, are addressing that? I see the design. I've seen it several times, but I don't hear the answers to those questions. And the other thing, well, I love, urgent care centers. Urgent care centers are nice, but you might also wanna look at satellites from some of the agency hospitals and that exist at this point. At this point, with so many hospitals closing, what has been established is satellite, where the hospital sponsors the, 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 the services that are required for a particular community, 'cause they know that community. So, that's what I'm asking right now, 'cause this is gonna take a long time, and I don't wanna go home with the same questions I had coming in.
Ma'am, in reverse order, uh, I've actually, in the last couple weeks, reached out to two different medical, uh, groups to talk about just that. So, I, I want you all to understand, I cannot mandate a healthcare facility to move to the site.
I'm just saying investigate.
Yes, ma'am, that is.
I said to urgent care. I'm talking about something a little different. That I will talk to you about different.
So, ma'am, I am, I am, I have almost forty thousand square feet of spaces to fill. And yes, ma'am, I'm looking at multiple options, and healthcare options are at the very top of that list. Those options are not going to materialize immediately. It's gonna take time to get, ma'am, it's gonna take time to get those particular types of providers interested in the site. They want to know timelines, they wanna know square footages, they wanna know build-outs. There's a process to getting to that point. So, my job right now is to continue, continue to educate them about the site, show them the opportunities. Like I said to the lady here, as I'm working through lease with the urgent care provider, that's when we'll get into exactly how they want their parking configured, exactly where they wanna be located on the site. But my first piece of this is I gotta get them interested in the site. Like, that's part of what, that's part of what we're doing now. So, that's just part of the process. So, there is no, I can tell you today that this is gonna happen tomorrow. It's going to take time to go through that process. The second thing you guys was about moderate housing, and, and you kinda tied that together with affordable housing. We will most likely, well, we will definitely apply for the Aspire program. The Aspire program, by definition, requires twenty percent of the units to be affordable. Uh, so that means you get two hundred, uh, affordable units. Now, here's, here's an interesting thing about the diversity of thought within the City of Orange. I've been with other groups, we've talked to other people, and they say Orange absolutely does not need any more affordable housing. And we absolutely don't want any more senior housing. So, so, so in this room.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I've just got a different mindset on it.
Okay, but, but, so this, this is great. This is, this is great. I want everybody to key in on this moment and why I continue to try to make this a dialogue and not just a, whatever they've been doing. I need to hear from you all in a, in a very constructive way. Okay, look, we think we need affordable housing, and this is why we think we need affordable housing. You know, we actually don't need affordable housing because we have too much, and it's this and it's that. So, I need, I keep putting up my email address and offering to meet with people so that I can get that insight. If you don't provide me with that insight, I won't have anything to really work with or to go on. Uh, so, so that really kinda puts your moderate and your affordable, uh, kinda housing question together. The last thing I'm gonna say is even at the price point that we're planning, our apartments are gonna be cheaper than what you can get in most parts of New York, cheaper than what you get in Jersey City, cheaper than what you get in Hoboken. Probably gonna be around twenty-three hundred dollars a unit. On, on, on average, on, on average. Well, just, just on average, 'cause we have studios, ones and two bedrooms. So, I'm saying the average will be about twenty-three, twenty-four hundred. Studios will be, you know, kinda nineteen hundred, two thousand. The two bedrooms will be a little more expensive. So, it'd be, you know, kinda on average, around twenty-three-ish hundred a unit is about where it'll be. And if you look around, if you look around the area, you'll see that on average, that's about what the rents are in Orange. If you go up to South Orange, that number jumps by about five, six hundred dollars. So, as you're talking about the need for moderate housing, uh, this will continue to be that moderate housing relative to the new, relative to the new construction that is being built in West Orange, South Orange, Montclair, and Bloomfield. And ma'am, that's, that's, that's my, that's my business competition. That's what I have to deal to. So, I'm trying to answer your question about how do we address moderate housing. It may not be the same price point as existing housing in Orange, but it's much less expensive than the competitive housing in Jersey City, Bayonne, Hoboken, South Orange, Maplewood. That's how the comparison really needs to be made.
Um, in my notes from the last meeting, um, I said, um, I thought you said about fifteen hundred units would be expected overall.
No, ma'am, a thousand five.
Oh, it's a thousand five?
A thousand five.
And that includes, um, the lot across the street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would the lot across the street have its own parking?
Yes, it will. Nope, has its own park.
Underneath the building?
Underneath the building.
So, sorry. Can you get through the project? Um, this is my first meeting, and it seems to be a follow-up to your prior meeting. But I thought, I thought it was two separate meetings, so I just want you to, for me and everyone else that's here for the first time, if you could get through the project. Don't take no more questions.
It, it is, it is. I could, I, I could, I could try. So, so, so look, so, so here's, here's what I was, here's what I was obligated to, to talk about the experience that we're trying to create at the site. And this would be quick, like I keep saying. We could have many more, we could have many more of these discussions. Um, but here, this, this is, this is really quickly, um, kinda starting, starting at ice skating rink, and what we're looking to create at Ice Skating Rink, really making it a focal point, uh, right behind City Hall. I know a lot of people don't ice skate here, don't think that it's a, uh, that it's a useful amenity. But instead of being distracted, uh, by the ice skating rink, what I'd like you to remember is the word amenity. That's all it is. It's an amenity. It's not driving the project. It's not the majority of the project. It's not the majority of the dollars that are being spent. It could be a fountain. It could be an artist's installation. It could be many things that are in this space. But we try to create a low-cost amenity that people could come and spend time with their family, and that would draw people outside of Orange into Orange to stay and spend an hour or two and spend money. So, that's the idea around the Ice Skating Rink. And that's fine if you don't ice skate. That's fine. But that's the experience that we're trying to create with the Ice Skating Rink. No, no, no. The, the Ice, the Ice Skating Rink's only gonna be iced for like three months out of the year. Yeah, a, a, absolutely. It's really gonna be a place for convening. Um, you know, think about school performances, places to get together. We'll do some roller skating in the spring and summer months. There are many other options for that space. The Ice Skating Rink is just something to do in the wintertime. That's what it is. I know we're very distracted on the Ice Skating Rink, but that's what the Ice Skating Rink is, and that's what that space is for. And just by the way, I don't ice skate either, but I do take my kids to Rockefeller Plaza every single Christmas to take pictures in front of the Ice Skating Rink. It's just a thing we do. It is a fun thing to do, and so we like doing it. So, I, I just say be a little open around, around the Ice Skating Rink. Uh, someone asked a question about covered seating areas, uh, in last meeting. Uh, we'll have covered seating areas under these units here, but then we'll have open seating areas throughout. This again is another, uh, via the Ice Skating Rink, again, with the, letting you know that the cafe will be here. There'll be outdoor seating, uh, some more spectator, uh, a place where you can come and relax with your family, spend time. But also, when different performances are being held, there'll be seating around the Ice Skating Rink area here in the cafe to sit down and enjoy the performances. Um, this is talking about, uh, more about the green space and showing access coming into the site, how we're trying to blend into the community, how this restaurant is a key piece of trying to pull people across the street, along with directing people to walk into the center of the site. Again, everything we're trying to do is to bring people from the community into our site versus keeping them out. This is just a rendering of what that green space will look like. Uh, we'll have elevated seating areas. We'll have trees. We'll have seating areas under this space. This is the elevated area to come to the buildings. There'll be swings here, more chairs and seating areas facing Ice Skating Rink. This here is, just giving you another look at how we plan to program the green space in the central core of, uh, of the courtyard here. Just another look from a different angle, kinda facing back towards Central. And then this is the Day, this is the Day Street extension, where we'll have a vehicle to drop off right here for either one of these two buildings. But we're also planning to have steps that take you down into the lower, into the lower levels. Now, these steps, I'm gonna zoom in, I'm gonna zoom in on this, so that you get a sense of what we're trying to create, if we can actually make this work. Um, what we're really talking about are not just steps, but really terraces, where people can come and sit and eat and relax, uh, and really just kinda enjoy being outdoors in the center of the space. This gives you another look at those terrace steps from the view, uh, from the courtyard up. And you see that we're planning to have green space. Again, this is more about a terrace than about just getting people up and down. This is back to, uh, the restaurant area. We're trying to make this an inviting place for people to come across the street. So, you see, we consider this a secondary public plaza. So, we're really trying to activate this space with a really cool and interesting restaurant. We think that smokestack really creates an iconic architectural element. And we want to do something where people are really drawn into this area to get them into the rest of the site. This is a, this is a look at, you know, the outdoor seating on the side of the restaurant. This is that wide walkway that we talked about. You know, we put this ping-pong table here just to represent that there'll be different ways to activate the space outside of the restaurant to continue to draw people in. This is a, an extension of the courtyard, which will be facing the tenant residences. Uh, kinda similar thing, a lot of green space, uh, open area as well. This is a look from Central down into the courtyard, so even if you walk across Central, you'll see a lot of green space. You'll see two full blocks of green space, again, with Mary Austin Hall being a focal point of, uh, of what you see when you look through the site. This is, uh, on top of that parking garage building that we have on the corner of Day Street and Central. Uh, this is where we'll have the amenities. These will be private amenities for the tenants. Uh, but this is what we'll have on top of that building. And then we talked about the vehicular circulation, uh, here. So, that, you know, was a lot quicker than I wanted to get through it. I wanted to spend more time kinda talking about the types of experiences, uh, that we wanna create. Again, I'll say I'm glad to have another meeting with as few or as many people that are interested, uh, because I do want an opportunity to continue to talk about many, many other aspects of the site. Uh, one of the things we didn't talk about is on Essex Street, how we're gonna step the building back, uh, an additional five feet from Essex Street, so that from a pedestrian experience, you don't have this big building hanging over. So, we. So we will be, I think it's on the, on the east side of Essex Street, we're the sixteen or eighteen feet away from the curb, and then when you get to floor three, the building will step back another five feet. On the west side of Essex Street, we're twelve or fourteen feet, build itself's back again. So trying to, uh, trying to create a good pedestrian, uh, experience. So our last question, go ahead.
I have a quick question. Uh, do you guys and the city have any idea?
So I can, I.
Do you guys and the city have any idea when you can have another general meeting? Uh, so we can have some of these other, uh, questions regarding how taxes and other stuff are addressed?
Okay.
There'll be lingering questions that are not, are not being answered.
Okay.
Number one.
Hold on, let me, let me just try these ones, one is they're gone. Uh, I keep saying I'm open to having meetings whenever with whoever. I keep saying it. On your question on taxes, I am not going to have a meeting on taxes because that's just not what I know about. So you can have that with, uh, with the city, but that's not for me to.
So we're saying, is it possible, uh, coordinating with the city to have a general meeting because we've had lingering questions that are not being answered? It's good for you to have these private meetings, however, that does not address, uh, the general, uh, questions that we have?
I, I, I keep answering that I am not the person to answer your, your questions about taxes. I, I, I'm not that person to answer those questions. So if.
As, as, as numbers get more concrete and the development develops a little bit further, and we know what numbers are, we know what contributions will get from the state and from other incentives, we'll have a series of public meetings to address taxes, the pilot, how much he'll pay, how much he pays taxes now, which is about three-hundred thousand, and that will go into millions as he builds, but those kinds of issues and those questions will be answered at a public meeting.
Uh, just one quick question about.
Okay, so we, we really need to wrap up. Uh, but this is, this is my email address. Can everyone see that? Okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, can, can everyone see that now? Everyone can see that? Yes? Okay, great, so look, email me, ma'am, let me just, let me just wrap up, please, let me just wrap up. Email me with your questions. Uh, I, I really do my best to try to be responsive and to try to get back to people who email me as fast as, as fast as possible. Somebody will, if they look in their timestamp, they'll tell you, they sent me an email at five AM, I emailed back at five oh four. So I really do try to get back to people as fast as possible with, uh, with their questions. I am really asking you all to help me plan this project. I really am asking you all to help me plan this project. I really am asking you all to help me plan this project. Without you, I don't know what's important to you. So these meetings aren't gonna be enough. I need your input if you wanna see anything happen differently with the project. So please email me if you have additional questions. I see you, I'll catch you at the end. Please email me if you have any additional questions. I'll grab that at the end.
This meeting and the other meeting is on the website, and any information that the developer provides, uh, will also be on the website.